Looks like we're here, so I will call to order the Tuesday, October 20th, meeting of the Monmouth City Council. And please note that all of us in the room are following the new OHA guidelines that require masks at all times when in an indoor space with other people. So we will be keeping our masks on tonight. Hopefully, that won't impede our ability to be understood. So Phyllis, roll call, please.
Counselor Belts.
Here.
Counselor Carey.
Here.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Sharmar.
Here.
Counselor Schinkel.
Here.
Counselor Silbernagle.
Here.
Mayor Kuntz.
I'm here, and I will invite Chad Olson for his last meeting to lead us in the flag salute. So if everybody else will mute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty as such.
Maybe your last official one is. Our first item of business, and tonight we have just our regular session and a work session. And see if we can get through our business this evening. Our first item is the consent calendar, which consists of the minutes of the council meeting of October 6th. And did anyone find anything they wanted to offer as a correction? Or we'll get those approved.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the October 6th meeting.
Thank you, Counselor. Sorry, the second. Darren. All right. Thank you, Counselor Lopez and Counselor Silbernagle. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed. All right. Great. Thank you. I will go ahead and mention public comments. So far in the room with us, we have our building official Larry Thornton and our finance director. So nobody here, but in case others on the line are interested in making public comment, we will entertain those during the time designated. And please go to the chat bubble in the upper right of your screen and message Phyllis Bowman only to let her know your name and the topic on which you would like to speak. We will limit those comments to three minutes, but welcome additional information in writing. And typically would not discuss the issue, but we may ask clarifying questions or convey some information to the speaker and can do follow up communication if necessary. So thanks, folks, for checking in. We do have a presentation this evening, and we will start with that this evening. In your packet, you've had some information about that. So Chad, do you want to introduce her?
Yeah. So thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. Stephen Howard is here. He's going to make a presentation to the council from the Community Climate Task Force. And ultimately, what they're asking the council to consider is a climate crisis resolution. Before turning it over to Stephen, I will just say, though, that what's scheduled for tonight is just a presentation. If the council is interested in a resolution, I would encourage them to consider that at your next meeting and not try to do that tonight. And with that, Stephen, thank you for sending this over.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Hello, city councilors. I'm Mayor Kuntz. Back to your time. The Climate Community Climate Task Force is a group of residents of Monmouth and Independence who have organized over our shared concerns about climate change. We found each other after listening for years as researchers provided data on how our civilization's emissions of greenhouse gases are affecting the future livability of our planet. And we have watched for years as our country has done next to nothing to address this crisis. The physical processes of climate change will not wait for our national leaders to find consensus around effective solutions to the problem. The purveyors of misinformation and doubt have delayed action to the point that purely market based solutions will not be enough to avoid dangerous levels of warming. It is the responsibility of every city to find climate solutions that will both minimize their community's greenhouse gas emissions and make them resilient to the effects of global warming we have already failed to prevent. It may seem odd to be asking for climate solutions at such a small scale. And while there are many actions that will need to be taken at the state or national or even international level, cities are an important piece of the puzzle. No other level of government has such a direct impact on how its residents live. To remain disengaged from solving the climate crisis is to endanger our lives and our livelihoods and make it that much harder for people to pursue the lives they envision for themselves and for their children. We are asking council to act on three things. First, as you just heard, adopting a climate resolution that emphasizes that all city actions and decisions will be made in the context of climate change. Second, form an intercity board with residents with independence to help find appropriate and effective actions our cities can take to address the climate crisis. And third, develop and adopt a climate action plan. We have both a responsibility and an opportunity to find climate solutions that fit our community's needs. We are here today because we want to help our families, friends and neighbors to get to the safe, healthy and hopeful future we know is possible. We need your help to make that future real. I do not have any slides or anything beyond that was in the packet to present tonight. In some ways, this is just a meet and greet between the work we've been doing as a small group in the community over the last 10 months or so and council. And I'd be happy to entertain comments or questions. I don't know how much of a discussion you really want to have during this meeting right now, but certainly any initial commentary you might have that we can take back to our group would be most welcome.
Thank you, Stephen. I really appreciate this. I, it was great to have those materials, and I know you've been providing a lot of other resources. And I really appreciate that because, again, this is a critical issue to consider and address and really looking at the micro scale, what can we do as a city? Although a city with its own electric utility and so that prevents presents unique opportunities and challenges, I suppose. Could you identify, I know at least one other person on the call is with your group. Stephen, would you mind introducing anybody with us this evening that's from your group?
Sure. The other person who is on the call with us is Michael Karen. He's a resident of Independence. My recollection is he has worked for the EPA in a past life, and he is another very involved member of our group.
Thanks. And I really also appreciate that you are working through this as a community, that we do, you do have residents from Monmouth and Independence working through this. I think that's another terrific option to partner. Any questions or comments about this? As Chad said, I would really like to have a work session where we can sort of talk through some of this rather than try to do that this evening. But would love input. Roxanne?
I agree. I would definitely like to talk about this at a work session. I did have a question because the first request within your statement, it seems like a very broad request. Can you tell me exactly what that means by the city needs to always consider? I didn't write it down, but always consider every decision from a climate standpoint?
Right. So, I mean, the fact is that day to day operations on any level of organization, from families to businesses to cities to countries have climate implications if you stop to think about it. And that can be as simple as, well, the thing I've talked about for when I've been at the open houses for the new city hall is making sure you get the building envelope right. So you're not spending a lot of energy powering the building, considering whether electrification is part of the fleet. If the vehicle market is available for that sort of thing would be. But also finances. And one of the things I was thinking that you could consider is tasking your departments to think about it internally to each department, what they could be doing. And some of that's going to be a learning exercise, of course. Boards and commissions will be making decisions. Certainly, my time on planning, there are very concrete things that we do in planning that affect people's energy use and what kinds of energy they use. It is broad because pretty much every decision we make, and we're not expecting everybody to be perfect as they go about their day to day life. That's been especially hard for individuals when they're trying to figure out what part they play. But I think it's especially important for organizations to realize that decisions they're making may have climate impact and trying to understand what is and is not feasible for an organization of a given size and a given amount of leverage to do to mitigate that impact.
Well, thank you. Thank you. I appreciate the clarification.
Sure.
Thanks, Counselor Belts. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Lopez and then Counselor Carey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you very much, Mr. Howard. I appreciate your work in this and the work of others on the citizen group that has put this together. I've given it a read through and very much am looking forward to, you know, taking this to more group discussions. I do want to ask a little bit for a little bit of additional information about how you envision the intercity advisory committee being structured and functioning. You know, on a high level, I did not see the advisory or the advisory committee mentioned in the resolution, but I love that concept. Anytime that we can work, you know, together with our neighbor to the east as opposed to in a siloed fashion, I would like to jump on that. And I'd like to hear a little bit about how you see that task force being utilized by the cities.
Sure. So I realize this isn't really a structure we have locally. I mean, the closest thing we probably have is the minor board. But I think all of us know here we are essentially one community. And to not be working together will create blind spots and missed opportunities that, you know, if we're talking to each other and working with each other, our solutions can be that much more effective and life enhancing as opposed to siloed. So in terms of composition of the boards and liaisons to councils or city staff, your guess is as good as mine in some ways. But I certainly see community development and economic development being involved. But I would also hope that people from utility services and other parts of the city governments would be paying attention because the day to day of implementing any recommendations are going to fall to them. So the sooner we can involve them and get their feedback and their very educated opinions on things, the better. One of the things that I've learned over my career and volunteering with the city is just understanding the iterative nature of learning as a community and to take the ideas that we've got and exercise them and see how they work and not expect that to be the end of the road. And iteration isn't the same thing as going slowly either. You work with information as you've got it. But the more inclusive we can be in that brainstorming and experimental process, I think the better off we'll be.
Well, I commend your energies here and thank you and the others involved in bringing this to council and very much look forward to taking the good work, the good work that you've done here and exploring real world implementation.
Counselor Carey.
Stephen, I want to echo others. Thanks for you and the commission or your organization to begin this conversation and bringing it forward. And I think a work session would certainly be in order. And I think that the coalition between Monmouth and Independence makes sense. You know, things don't change at the city limit line. And while that same could be true with others, we are sort of joined at the eastern boundary or western, as it were. And so I think that makes good sense to do that. But from my perspective, before we can get, you know, too far and too serious into this, I'd like to see a little more, you know, citation on some of the data that you quote. You know, on the charting at the end, there was a, you know, you cited the source for that. And quite honestly, I didn't flesh that out. But, you know, I think we're going to go this route. We need to make certain that this is science based and not political based. And I'm not suggesting that you're either or, you know, one or the other. But as we move forward in this, we want to be working from my perspective, you know, on science. And then, at the same time, I'd like us to find a way, because a lot of the data that we seem to get and a lot of the suggested behavioral changes and modifications are probably, just as I read it, a little more impactful in an urban setting. We're in a very rural setting in the grand scheme of things. Now, that's not to say that there aren't things we can do, but I would like us to be able to differentiate between, you know, San Francisco, Seattle, Portland, Monmouth and Independence in terms of how we structure that. And that may be embedded in your first one that says, you know, consider climate change in all of your decisions. So that may be the point that that's done. But that isn't dissonance for me. It's just something I'm trying to work out and perhaps we can get to as we get to a work session. But again, thank you for your work, and I think it's a good idea to move on this.
Sure. And one of the nice things is I've come to understand after studying this for about 20 years that when people are really enthusiastic about tackling this, they tend to shoot the stars and want lots of cultural shift and things that might be good for very many reasons. But it turns out that a lot of the work that needs doing isn't that novel. It doesn't require a lot of habit change entirely, and it doesn't require new technology. It also doesn't require turning back the clock somehow. So I've been excited about some of the new information that's been coming out about just how middle of the road solving climate change can be. So I agree, we'll work from the facts and avoid overreach while still making sure that the solutions we suggest actually get the job done.
Wonderful. Thanks. Other comments? Counselor Sharmar? Schinkel, Silbernagle?
Laurel?
Thanks for doing this, Stephen and Michael. Appreciate it. While we're looking for ways that the cities can minimize their carbon footprint, I think there's a lot that individuals can do as well. And one of the easiest is to switch from a meat based diet to a plant based diet.
One of the things you might be interested to know is we're trying to, in addition to working with the cities, one of the things we are thinking about is how to engage with just our local community, people who aren't in government, helping them understand that personal impacts are important, that the most important personal impacts are participation, but that there are things that, after they've participated in the political process and made their voices heard, there are things like reducing meat consumption and so forth, electrifying their homes, that are real solutions. So, yeah, we're not only going to be talking to the cities. We're hoping to also talk to the community.
Right. Thank you, Michael, Stephen. I see Carol Ayers on the phone as well now.
Yes, she has trained. She has been in our meetings, but also.
Joining. Really appreciate this. Appreciate the opportunity to talk about it at an upcoming meeting with our new city manager, who may be bringing some additional expertise from a more urban area. So we will be in touch and start really looking at a way to work together to do this. I think it's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that takes us to the mayor's report. A few things. We have announced the retirement, impending retirement of Darrell Talan, our police chief, who has spent his career in public service in the Monmouth Independence area. And he has given us plenty of opportunity to celebrate him, and we will do so over the coming months before his official retirement in April. Our new city manager, Marty Wine, will be working with him to start planning a transition. And Marty has actually gone through a police chief recruitment and hire in her time in Tigard. So she has some expertise to bring to that. We have obviously talked quite a bit at length about stormwater utility. And while we have enacted that utility and have not set rates, we all know that one of the great impacts on that, in addition to a difficult hit to many household budgets, will be to commercial properties. And even though during the entire process, we heard several times about the great outreach that Russ Cooper had done contacting large property owners and really being available for questions. And we got some good feedback that that was actively engaging. I just wanted to let you all know as a follow up, as someone who is a director of operations for a large commercial property owner in the city, the central school district, we got a notice that Russ is actually having an open house, a virtual stormwater meeting, October 27th. And this is intended for large customers. So he has personally invited large customers to come and join this meeting and have another opportunity to talk more about the stormwater utility and get some input from the large property owners. So I just really appreciate that and thought you would want to know that outreach continues. It's not like we've said, okay, we have everything we need to know about this. So that was great. Last week, Suzanne Duffner, our community and economic development director, and Sean Irvine met with officials from Salem Health, from their clinic managers. They, it started with a conversation with myself and Mayor McCartell, and they brought a team of people to town. So they really are looking at how they could potentially expand facilities and healthcare access in our towns. Found out, got feedback from them, very, that they really appreciated the tour and appreciate Suzanne getting a chance to meet with them and talk about how we can attract more services here. I attended the League of Oregon Cities Conference last week. And even though this year it was only going to be in Salem, so wasn't going to be much of a travel opportunity anyway, the virtual conference was held two days last week. I actually helped plan the Oregon Mayors Association mini session, and we focused that session as well as a lot of sessions during the league meetings itself were around diversion, equity and inclusion. The topic of how we make sure that everybody's voices are included, and we are looking at things from the lens of equity, which actually was part of this climate change discussion, was really profound and a lot of great sort of philosophical discussions, but also practical discussions. And so look forward to talking a little bit more about that and how that might work here in our community. And last, I met with Marty Wine on Saturday. She and I had breakfast, and she was very excited to get sort of an additional tour. Then when she was here for her interview, she got the official tour. But she wanted to see Dallas. She wanted to see Independence and start really getting a feel for the region. And it was a great conversation. She, her last day in Tigard was last Friday, and it was declared and proclaimed Marty Wine Day in Tigard. So that looks from pictures I saw and conversations I heard about. It was a great opportunity to celebrate her leaving there. She is meeting this week with department head. She'll join our economic development discussion next week. She's diving all in. She's ready to learn and grow with us. So very excited about that. And that concludes my report. So we will go on to the report of boards and commissions. And actually, you received from Phyllis, we're doing great. We're getting lots of new recruits here. Eleanor Maroney has applied to join the senior advisory board. And it looked like from Eleanor's application and information about her, that one of her real interests is communication and outreach. The newsletter, she talked about finding other ways to connect as seniors, since it's pretty clear we're probably not going to be opening our senior center anytime soon. So she had some great ideas about finding out about how folks could connect online. So I would entertain a motion to appoint Eleanor Maroney to the senior advisory board.
I'll make that motion to appoint Eleanor Maroney to the senior advisory board.
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Lopez and Counselor Bell for the second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And any opposed? Okay. Thanks. We will let her know and get her engaged with that group. So other boards and commissions, Laurel?
I have a question. I wonder if you can help me understand why you're not willing to accept a motion to appoint Royal Johnson to the budget committee?
Well, I said we would wait. We have several openings on that committee. We had many resignations, so we'll probably be recruiting for that once we have some budget committee dates open. These other groups are meeting. These other groups are meeting regularly now. They're trying to get together a little more often, so.
Well, after serving on that committee for four years, I know it's a lot of work. It's a lot of time. It's a lot of study. And I think if we have someone who's willing to do that work and spend that time, we should at least be allowed to make a motion to appoint them.
Sure, go ahead.
All right. So are you entertaining that motion?
Well, sure.
Okay, so I move to appoint Royal Johnson to the Monmouth Budget Committee.
I'll second that.
Right. Thank you, Counselor Sharma and Counselor Schinkel for the second. Any questions or discussion?
Yep.
This is John. I hope that we ultimately appoint Royal because he's good at that. That said, I think because of the significance of that committee and the participation that's required, I think it's wise to have a call for those that are interested. There are a number of people that would like to serve on that that don't know there's, there's an opportunity to do that yet. And so I would, I would hope that we can, you know, make a sort of a large recruiting call at some time when it's, and to get as many people in as we can. Again, I can, you know, I, without knowing the pool, I can, I'm pretty sure that I will be voting in favor of Royal because I appreciate the work that he does. I just would like to have it, I'd like us to be able to pick people other than a first-come, first-served basis.
Counselor Lopez?
I, well, I, while I do understand the impetus to have committees filled, as we do have a history of, like many cities, difficulty in keeping our committees full. I also respect the intricacies that go along with passing the budget. And as Counselor Carrie mentioned, the, the real deep commitment, especially in that, you know, in that compact amount of time. As such, I, you know, I have a great amount of respect for Royal. And, but, but I do align myself with, you know, with what Counselor Carrie is proposing, a broader, broader all-call for submissions to that committee as opposed to just filling them on a, you know, first-come, first-served basis.
Yes, Counselor Schinkel.
I think that I definitely agree that getting there first shouldn't qualify you or automatically be a rubber stamp for, for an appointment to a committee. And this council, at any time, you know, we take a vote on these applicants for a reason, to make sure that we're all in somewhat of a consensus as to who should be appointed. And that being said, I think that Royal, given his experience and his knowledge and his dedication to the budget process and the city for all his volunteer hours, I think he's uniquely positioned where I'm confident that if I was voting today or in the next six months, that he would definitely get my vote. So I don't, the view from my seat is I wouldn't need to wait for a vote for him. Someone who came in without that experience or who didn't, hadn't detailed, you know, what they bring to the table, might be a different story. But I do know what Royal brings.
Okay, I will go ahead and call for the question. So all in favor of appointing Royal Johnson to the budget committee? Please signify by saying aye and maybe raising your hands also. I can see.
Aye.
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 And opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Chris and Roxanne, and I'm the tiebreaker. So I am going to vote to wait a little bit. I think we can hurry up and get an all-call out and really talk about the value of the budget committee and go ahead and get folks recruited and on. I agree, Royal certainly has an immense amount of experience and history to bring to the group. Don't disagree that he might not end up on it. But let's go ahead and do a broad recruitment, since we did have quite a few resignations. I really want to make sure we've got a good group of folks ready to help. So we will table that for right now. Thank you, though, Laurel, for bringing it up so we can have the discussion. And I'll work with Janet to make sure we're getting a really enticing announcement out to try to see how many folks we can get. Because I agree, I think there's going to be a lot of good interest in this and get some good perspectives.
Cece, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just to avoid any confusion in the minutes, technically that's not tabled, of course, the motion, I think with your, no vote being recorded is no, the motion would be recorded as having failed.
Thank you for the Roberts rules refresh.
I want to make sure that's clear. Certainly can be brought up again, but yeah.
Great. The issue might be tabled, the vote is not.
That's correct.
Yep, okay. Thanks. So we had other boards and commission meetings. Anybody for a report this evening? I've got Darren first, and then John has one.
Great, thank you. Tree Advisory Board met last Thursday on the 15th. And the primary two discussion areas was their lease planning. It sounds like to plant a tree adjacent to power and light and a lot back behind it. And so there was some good discussion around that, and the plan is to do that. There was also some really good discussion related to Madrona Park and the trees that we've lost in Madrona Park. And they're going to try to get a person from, I believe it was OSU, to do maybe some analysis of the soil and see if there's something we're either missing or something that's out of whack that we can fix, because they're losing quite a few trees there in that area. So that was the other focus that we had was, first time we've had a meeting for a while. It was good to have one, and we are one board member short as well yet. So we're still looking for a tree advisory board member as well. Thanks.
Great. Well, there's, there you go. And there, there's another great committee for our climate review, folks. All right, so Counselor Carrie?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, before I get to the planning commission, Counselor Silbernagle, I would suggest a, an agenda item for the tree board. I've noticed that we've got three or four of the crepe myrtles that have been planted. And the ones I'm thinking of are on Powell, I believe. And they've kind of gone to shrub. And, you know, which can happen to those. And so it might be worth a discussion at the tree board level, whether they'd like to keep them as a shrub and, and deal with them that way or whether they ought to go in and prune them back and get them into the more traditional tree look. Again, I don't have a sense one way or the other. I'm concerned that it may begin to, some of them may begin to get into the sidewalk, into the parking areas. So anyway, if you don't mind, if you'd take a, any suggestion, I'd appreciate that.
I'm happy to pass that along. Thanks, John.
Okay, good. And then the planning commission met on October 7th. And the primary agenda item was a work session regarding the code assistance grant that we, that we have, we're engaged in. We've got a consultant that will be working with us. Her name is Sarah Breakstone. And she asked a lot of good questions. The planning commission provided a lot of excellent feedback, both verbally and then subsequently some written feedback. In terms of things that we could do in our code that would enhance development, you know, would, would, let's see, what are the other things that would improve our ability to provide housing? And, and things that might be helpful for business development, to identify some impediments that might be there. There'll be more information coming out on this. There'll be ultimately a webpage on the community development website in the city and requests in a variety of ways for public input. And so on, the planning commission's a prime mover on this. It'll ultimately get to the council to develop, to respond or approve an action plan that comes forward. So it's the kind of thing that we, we wanted to get started. We've got it started and it's moving. So anyway, just update on that. Good stuff, I think, is on the way. And where there are opportunities to provide input, it will be welcomed. That concludes the planning commission report.
Right, yeah, that is going to be our next big review. And appreciate they're getting that kicked off. Excited about that one. Counselor Bell?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I attended the historic commission meeting that was on October the 7th. It was held in person and remotely. And just a couple of things that they discussed. They talked about a historic display that they would like to put together, featuring Squire Whitman, who came over on the Oregon Trail, settled in our area in about 1850. And there's been quite a bit of research about him and his family. So they want to do a display. They've talked about any variety of ways in which to do that display, perhaps having something that's movable where it could be at the library one month and then in the window of the Odd Fellows Hall the next month, et cetera, et cetera. So that's exciting that they're talking about having a lot, you know, big figures to stand up and information like that. Excuse me. There'll be a historic workshop that is put on by the Oregon Heritage Program of the Oregon State Parks. And I actually don't have the date for that. I apologize. There, there's going to, the volunteer hall will be open for people that want to go listen to that. And since I'm going to ask Suzanne Duffner if the next meeting is November 4th, perhaps she can say the date of that workshop?
Yeah, it's November 16th from 9 to 4. So yeah, any additional details, just get a hold of me.
Thank you. And the other question is, are there any openings on the historic commission?
Yes, we actually have one vacancy. So yeah. If you're interested, send us an application and we'll bring it forward to the council.
Good. It's, it's a lively and very engaged group. So it's fun to be a part of that as a liaison. Second thing is Suzanne Duffner and I met virtually with a representative from Bird Scooters. And this was just an introductory conversation. She had instigated it, that she, the woman whose name suddenly escapes me. But she is now in charge of putting together programs to bring bird scooters into communities. And similarly to what happened with spin bikes, it does not cost the community anything to have this happen, but they work with a local businessperson to develop a relationship and build a business that way. We only had an introductory call just to get a sense of what they were trying to do. We've asked her to put together a lot more information so that we can then discuss it with the mayor and then discuss it with council if it's something we even want to talk further about. Did I capture that pretty well, Suzanne?
Yeah, I think so. I think this is the early exploration phases and asking a lot of questions about, yeah, service. Thank you.
Good. All right. That's my report.
While you're still on that, just a quick question. By scooter, do you mean like a Vespa or like a little push scooter that you push with your motorized scooter? You would.
Right. It's, it's, it's the latter. They're the scooters that I believe don't go faster than, I don't know, 30, 25 miles an hour, something like that. They're chargeable scooters and then people pay per minute to use. Nothing like a Vespa, nothing like a motorcycle, but certainly nothing like a personally-powered bicycle either.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Yep, good question. Okay, thank you, Roxanne. Any other boards or commission? Counselor Schinkel?
Real quickly, we, the Parks and Recreation Board met for the first time with Russ Cooper as the new staff person leading that group. Made some introductions, went over some Parks Master Plan priorities, and then got an update from regarding the skate park. Skate park committee is starting up again, getting, getting back in the flow. Updated them on our intention to look at the process of including that piece of property in the Urban Renewal Agency or the Urban Renewal District. It was a pretty brief meeting, first, first, first meeting with Russ. And so we expect big things in the future, though.
Wonderful. Good to hear about folks getting back, back into the groove. So great. And seeing no others, I will turn to Chad for his last Monmouth Managers' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I have nothing to report.
Try.
Just kidding. You can't, the mask, you just can't tell when I'm kidding. Actually, there's just a couple of things I wanted to mention to the council. Most of my time and some staff time is being spent on the transition with Marty. So the big effort is, you know, preparing the files of current and relevant projects that she's going to be working on. So a lot of organ, just organizing those and putting them in a way that I can convey them to her electronically as well as hard copies and that there's copies are retained in the city's IT where it can be found. Always a challenge sometimes. The second thing I wanted to mention is, at the last council meeting, so you had a citizen make comments about the library, the access to the library. The library director and I, we, we had a discussion. And I think the best thing to do, what I suggested to Krist is to just schedule a work session that she and the council can come in and she can talk about the library services during COVID. Because it's, especially during an uptick which we're experiencing right now, it's, it's not just a given. And certainly there's a lot of different library districts that are approaching it differently. So I told Krist that this would be the type of thing that I would facilitate a work session for her to come and talk to the council about library services during COVID. So look for that hopefully in November. She needs to talk to Marty about that as well in advance. And I appreciate the mayor mentioning the stormwater virtual meeting. So yes, and it's another step of engagement with the larger property owners to just talk about it, answer questions, and, and continue to have dialogue regarding that. And the last thing I'll mention that we're setting up is a diversity training that we're working with. Wu is preparing a, a training program. It would just, I believe, be one day. But there's a program that Wu is going to put together and the cities of Monmouth and Independence had agreed to basically co-sponsor. Independence has taken the lead in organizing. But we will be sending during the first round, all of the department heads. So we've reserved nine spots during that training. And then what I would envision over the next year is, as it continues, is to, is to then push it down in the organization for all of our staff. But I thought it was most important to lead with the city manager and the department heads first. So we're looking forward to that. And the last thing I want to tell the council, the mayor and the council is, I've been doing this for more than 30 years. And I honestly mean that the council working with you guys is, I don't use the word delightful very often, but it certainly. could be a lot worse. That's a private joke. I, I say that quite a bit. Things can be a lot worse. Now, it's been a, a real pleasure working with the mayor and council over the past year. It did go way longer than I expected. I do now have an additional skill set that I didn't have before I came here. But I can honestly say compared to, I'd say, most or all councils, you guys have been just absolutely the, the best group to work with. And you are just privileged to have the department heads and staff that you do have. And I mean that sincerely, that you have a highly skilled, experienced, and, and a group of department heads that get along well with each other and are always thinking about what's in the city's best interest. So I, you couldn't, you couldn't be in a better position. And just kudos with getting Marty to come in as your next city manager because she will be just really excellent working with you over the next five years, for sure. So it's been a pleasure, but I, I, I won't miss you after I leave. Again, smiling.
That, that concludes your report.
That is the end of my report. Thank you very much.
I will mention that the diversity training, actually, the curriculum for it involves not only instruction sort of stuff, but it involves self-reflection, it involves some exercise. So it's actually like a two or three month process per cohort. The first cohort will have our department heads, as mentioned, 10 folks from the city of Independence. The fire department will be having two people join, school district potentially. Dallas, the city of Dallas has asked to be included and they will be sending some staff. The Polk County has been invited. So we really see this as a great opportunity to get a common language among our regional folks and will be really a great process and program that was developed specifically by Wu to sort of really specifically help us in this community. So, yeah, it's great. Yes, Roxanne.
Has there been any discussion of our council, Independence City Council, Dallas City Council also participating in this?
Yeah, that would be when, when we say pushed down, I would say that will be other, that those will be opportunities as well. Absolutely. Yep. That's kind of been the discussion. And the school board and so forth. So, yep. More to come on that. All right. We have one more report and that is our first quarter financial report before citizen comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. Before I talk about the first quarter report, I wanted to share with you that in your boxes over here at City Hall, we have the brand new, fresh off the press, thank you Walt of Local Waltz Printing Shop, and your CIP are, are in your boxes. Also, they are posted on the web finally. They did get into the county on time before September 30th as required, but it has been a challenge to get things done as quickly as usual. However, I think it's a good read, so I encourage you to get your copies and, and start looking.
She would say that.
It is a good read. What can I say? As, as one of our budget committee, well, our budget committee chair pointed out, you know, the proposed budget document doesn't have a lot of the bells and whistles that the, the final adopted document has. And so, you know, a lot of good information has been added to the final version so that it is a better, more transparent document that provides a lot of information to you as well as to the public. So again, I hope that you will take advantage of that and, and ask any questions of me that you may have as you look through it. But hopefully it helps explain some of the ins and outs of how we developed the budget a little bit, with a little bit more information than you had before. Moving on to the first quarter report, as I mentioned in the overview of the, the staff report, the news is generally good. The first quarter is, is looking quite well. We have not had terrible impacts from the pandemic, fortunately, and we are still working with a good amount of grant funding to try and help not just our own costs, but also community costs that will hopefully put us in a better position to recover despite this ongoing challenge that we face with our economy in this, in these times. As far as the actual financials of the city, we have good news on the property tax front. I had forecasted the 3% growth that is fairly typical because of that being the cap. We, it looks like we actually, with the certified rolls, will be receiving about 3.4% growth. Not a big bump, but still will help. And more importantly, for our Urban Renewal District, which as you know, we're working hard on keeping moving forward before the expiry of it, we are actually up 17% for our tax increments. So that's exciting because that will help with something that we'll talk about a little bit later, our bank loan. And as well, I wanted to let you know, I just learned that our PERS rates, again, this doesn't, this isn't really this quarter, but trying to give you a little bit of a, a positive spin on what future quarters may involve. Our PERS rates for the 2123 biennium also look very, very good compared to where the trends had been going. Our tier one, tier two rates, in fact, are, have fallen relative to what we're paying this biennium. OPSERP is a little bit higher and that is where the bulk of our employees are now. The OPSERP is our tier three employees, which are our newer employees, basically. However, I haven't done much forecasting yet. More about that in January when we meet for kickoff, but, for our budget kickoff. But anyway, I'm, I'm feeling fairly upbeat with those two particular pieces of news. On other fronts, departments are on target with their spending. And essentially, you know, library is the only one that's a little bit over the 25% year to date. And it's, it's very normal reasons that they are over that are typical for this time of year. My net turned over a larger amount towards debt service than was anticipated in the, their first payment. Again, great news. And they seem to be on track to coming in basically over budget on what we were expecting them to pay. So that should be a very good impact for the Power and Light Fund who sets aside a certain amount of money, as you know, to help pay off the debt service on the My Net loan, or the My Net bonds, I should say. As far as other funds, everything again is pretty much as expected. I will say that from the, the treasury report that I provided, the local government investment pool rate did just drop again. While it's effective tomorrow, it's going down to three quarters of a percent from the 1% that I mentioned in the investment report that it went, went to in July. We don't rely on our interest earnings. However, you know, at some point, the LGIP may continue to fall and it may make sense if yield curves are going up that we look at some of those options that we have available under our investment program to go out a little further with our dollars to spread them a little further. But right now, again, it is just a low risk place to have fairly liquid funds. And so I have no plans to do anything in the near term, but we'll continue to look at that going forward. And I think with that, I would welcome any questions you have.
I was looking at my packet. Counselor Carey. Are you, no, he's just reading.
I have a quick, I have a quick question for you, Janet. On the Oregon ballot, there's an initiative to divert marijuana tax revenue to rehabilitation programs. Are you familiar with that? Will that have any effect on that revenue that we brought in in the past?
I am, I'm not familiar with that particular ballot initiative. And I know that the revenue that we get from that is, is more, it's not a large amount of money anyway that we, again, that we rely on in any way to perform. It's typically, you know, not right around $100,000. So it's not, you know, obviously, we enjoy getting it and it helps a lot with the, with the general fund. But I, at this point, I haven't done any analysis to see what the impact is.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I agree. I thought that was interesting. Typically lobbyists, for example, because it does impact schools revenue as well. Typically, our lobbyists would be kind of agitated about it. And we haven't really heard anything of schools either about the concerns about the impacts. So I'm.
Yeah, League of Oregon Cities has been silent on it. I, I mean, I've heard more about the vape tax maybe getting us another $2 or $3.
Yeah, yeah.
On our cigarette tax, but I have not heard that much about the marijuana tax.
I, I tried to research it to see the impact on public sector and didn't really get much. So, yeah, great question. Anything else for Janet on that?
Janet, you mentioned, you mentioned the uptick in, in My Net's contribution to the debt payment. Where would I find that on your, on the, you know, the ledger that you provided for us?
So it should be, well, you, you can't actually see the amount, but if you look at Fund 18, that's the My Net Fund.
Yeah.
And it's, it is that, well, actually, that, that whole amount almost is, is it. So if you look at page, page five of 12, but, or page 18 of the packet, Fund 18, the revenue line there, the 267,912 in, under year-to-date actual, do you see that?
Just.
Page 18.
18 of the.
Yeah. I've got that. I'm just, I'm just looking for the, for the line, the, the rev, fund revenues.
Yep, My Net revenues.
Yep.
So the year-to-date actual column in September 2020, that 267,912, the bulk of that is that, is that payment. There's some interest revenue in there as well, but the 267,912 is about what they paid.
Sure. And, and where's the budget item for that?
Well, it's encompassed in that 1197, but the 1197 includes the, the 400,000 from that would nominally be paid by Power and Light. So there, there's that piece. And then there's some no net money. And, and so the, the number is typically, we expect to get around 500 or 600,000 from them. But typically, that first payment is much lower, the October payment, because they're watching their cash flows. And so initially, when John Cooper was in, was projecting what he would pay in October, the number was quite a bit lower than 260,000. And then if he can, you know, he makes up the difference for the June payment, the June debt payment. But now he's projecting that the June debt payment will be about what he was projecting before, plus he gave more, or well, they gave more in October for the October payment.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Chris, did you have a question?
Nope.
I was just giving, giving Ms. Shinar the thumbs up.
Yep. Always good to get good news this early in the fiscal year, for sure. Okay. No other questions? Then we will move to citizen comments. And again, we still have none in the room. Phyllis, do we have anyone for a comment online?
John Oberst, are you making your own comments or do you want me to read them? Okay. So John Oberst had a comment that I shall read into the.
I've got, I've got it, Phyllis.
You've got it? Okay. Good.
I had to shuffle my desk a little bit. So I'm going to step out and on the behalf of the citizens of Monmouth and for that matter, Independence, I would like to thank interim manager Chad Olson for the time he spent in our community. When he agreed to come to our city for his interim stint, I feel sure he didn't have either an initially failed search for a permanent manager nor a global pandemic in his sights. What is typically a six-month caretaker role has stretched into a year. His agreement to stay for a full year until we have our new manager onboard was a blessing. More importantly, however, Chad never took the caretaker part of that description as being in his job title. It's common for interim managers to simply keep the basic functions of a city running without really having to deal with any underlying issues. Chad has made a point of moving important items forward, tackling things that needed to be addressed and leaving our city a better place as he leaves us. He examined our Urban Renewal District and helped craft a plan for its final five years. He worked with his counterpart in Independence to develop a community-wide response to the COVID-19 pandemic. He worked through the details needed to ensure the construction of the building on the empty lot across from City Hall. He helped council move towards adoption of a stormwater utility, an item that languished for nearly six years. And finally, he's helped steer, steer our city council toward a sound and doable approach to the long-delayed replacement of our inefficient, inaccessible, overcrowded, and seismically insecure City Hall. For all these actions and many, many more, I'd like to thank Mr. Olson for his time in our community. I understand the golf course beckons. May you hit them long and hit them straight. Thanks a lot, Chad, for coming to Monmouth and doing all you've done while you've been here.
Thank you very much. That was very nice. I really appreciate that. And yes, the golf course beckons. And I told John Carey on Friday, so we did go out and hit some balls. And I told him a year ago, I remembered when I came and met the council and I introduced myself as, hi, my name's Chad Olson. I'm a 15 handicap trending lower. And to this day, I still think that's hilarious. But thank you, John, and I, I really do appreciate that.
And along with that, I have this plaque to present to Chad. It is on a fairway green background, to Chad Olson, interim city manager, October 2019 to October 2020. It only seemed like 12 years. Thank you for your leadership, partnership, dedication to public service, patience, recruiting skills, and sense of humor, which have served Monmouth very well during one of the most challenging years in its long, dry history.
Well, thank you very much.
That's timed by the mayor and city council staff did their own farewell to Chad today. And apparently, we missed an awesome skit and his exit interview was acted out. So this, this, it's been a long year, but it has been, as the former mayor said, one of the most productive, lots of things that we've been able to accomplish together and really appreciate.
I, I certainly appreciate that. And yes, it's been a year and it's, it's felt a lot longer. But thank you, John, for that. I, it was very kind of you to say that. And thank you, Mayor, for that.
Are there any other council comments? Roxanne and then Roxanne.
Roxanne and then Roxanne. I just wanted to say, Chad, that council actually does have something for you as well, which I have been coordinating. And typically, I am spot on, on time. I would have had everything to you. Somehow, just the time just got away from me. So the good news is, we have to get back together and, and you have to come back then. The bad news is, I, I'm sorry, council, that I've let you down and I didn't get this together to give to Chad tonight. But we do have something for you as well. And with our undying thank you.
Yeah. And I look forward to that.
And he still is around until next Friday. He makes it sound like today's his last day.
Yeah, no, we're still playing. I mean, he still has work to do.
Yeah, we'll see about that.
Well, you better show up for economic development. All right. So are there any other council comments before we adjourn? Chris?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, I won't make any attempt to, to wish Chad farewell because I wish he would stay. But I'm excited to have, have Marty But I'm excited to have have Marty Wine join us. And I think the the sentiments have been very well said by many that are more eloquent than myself. So I'll just I'll just encourage everyone to remember that. Remember that it is election season and those, you know, your your pamphlets and your ballots should be in your mailboxes or potentially returned back to the state at this point. And would encourage everyone to 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 look into not only the candidates on every scale, but also the ballot measures that were referenced in tonight's meeting, as well as a couple of other important ballot measures that are out there. These things have real implications to, you know, how we run our city and how many of us, you know, in one way or another, live our daily lives. So, you know, exercise your civic duty and no matter who you vote for, go vote.
Thank you. And wear your damn mask, because you didn't say that, so.
All in my statement, wear your damn mask.
And as many people on this council know, one vote can make a huge difference. So don't ever believe your vote doesn't count.
Right. All right. Thank you all very much. Then a motion to adjourn. To work session.
So moved?
The move.
I'm going to take Roxanne for the motion, and all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Excellent. We shall move into our work session. I am going to go ahead and take just a couple of minutes. We are at 7:47 by one of the various clocks in this room. So let's go to 7:55. That gives us 78 minutes. So we'll take a little break and come back.
Hey, Byron. Just a little more on discussion we had about going budget committee thing. We get criticized a lot for not being very transparent. And so the degree we can throw that open, I think, would be helpful in that regard. I don't disagree with anything you said about the nominee. But just in terms of process was my, that was my only issue.
No, it's totally reasonable.
And I want to let you guys know, too, that I I got a warning on the computer that said there was a slow connection speed and suggested that I turn off the camera. So if I disappear, it's not because I don't love you anymore.
If I disappear, it's because I'm doing things I don't want you to see.
Wait a minute, that doesn't sound good. No, I I get the same warning on my computer. That's why my camera, that's why sometimes I turn my camera off.
Yep.
It's also because I'm eating popsicles, so.
Y'all just need to call Minnet and get upgraded to that one gig, right, Chris?
Exactly, you know, I I appreciate the 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 plug there, you know. Minnet does offer one gig service. However, I I will say, I myself am on Minnet's basic plan. And I am a computer power user, and I find that to be more than enough. When when I do get that low bandwidth warning myself, it's usually because I forgot to log out of my my workplace's crummy VPN.
Yes, yeah, I suspect for us, it's how many items we have running in the house, you know. Once you've got three computers and the and everything, because we've we've got Minnet, we have perfectly great service. I didn't know that there was something better we could have, so I might have to remind Bruce that we could upgrade, but.
That's right.
I I will, I will remind you that in especially in systems like this, it's only as strong as the weakest link. And in most homes, that's that's actually your your wireless router. Wireless routers, generally, they recommend upgrading them every, depending on who's writing the article every two to four years. And I I know that mine is older than that myself, so.
All right. We are going to proceed. I will call to order the work session, and I've got one, two, three, four, five. Six of you here. So we shall move on. And one, one, kind of one item tonight, really, and so hopefully get through this.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Madam Chair and Directors.
No.
We're not, this is not here, this is work session.
Oh, we ruined this joke.
We we ruined the punchline.
I wish there was one. So, yeah, work session. But I was thinking, so at the last urban renewal meeting, so that made me think of urban renewal. The agency had their discussion about the contribution level that they're going to make to the City Hall project. And that amount is 3.65 million. And as we discussed during the during the meetings, there's the total project is $9 million. And what's being proposed to the council and to the agency, but to council primarily, is this three-legged stool approach, where you have the Urban Renewal Agency contributing its share to the project. Internal reserves is how I'm articulating that. So you have reserves that will contribute to the project. And then the residual would be the general obligation bond put out to the electors. So the, like I said, the agency had determined 3.65 is the contribution that they're going to make to it, which. And I set this up to be similar to the discussion that you've had during the past two meetings. So I'm presenting options for the council to consider in terms of this discussion is focusing on the city reserve contribution. So again, thinking of the GO bond as the residual number. The discussion tonight is how much does the city want to put in out of contributions by the various funds, being general fund, water funds, sewer, and street fund, building fund, and so on. So that with that, I'll just go into the different options that I laid out to the council. The base option, as it stands right now, the city has developed a internal city reserve contribution of $2.375 million. So I'm considering that to be your base option. If you add that with the urban renewal contribution amount, that the residual GO bond is $2.975 million. So that's kind of, that's the 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 base option that we're considering. So with that, there are three, three options. And the first option is considers a reduction to the internal reserve. So listening to the council during the discussions, there's, you know, obviously, there's an impact that contributing to the project has on the different funds. What and and I I would say especially the enterprise funds, the water sewer and the electric Power and Light Fund. So because those are have rates associated with them, they, there's an impact to those. But they have, for the current base proposal, those have been incorporated into the five-year forecast that the finance director has presented to the council. So the first one, though, would look to reduce the internal reserve contribution by $250,000. And you can see the impact that has on the option. So the reserves would be reduced to 2.125 million. And the GO bond request to the voters would be 3.225. And then in the discussion, you know, there's just, I tried to look at what the pros and cons were of that. You can, you can take a look at it. I'd say probably the the biggest thing, and I think as some of the council have said over the past, is, you know, it it would reduce the impact on the the different funds. That's probably the biggest thing. Now, the argument back is that the those funds take advantage of having a the city hall because the finance department, the utility billing clerks for water and sewer and different things like that. So they, that's why that each of the funds should be making contributions to the project. But this one reduces that amount by $250,000. The second option would increase the contribution by 250,000. So the city contribution would increase to 2.625 million. The GO bond would reduce to 2.725 million. So you again, you increase the one, reduces the GO bond. And the discussion just talks about the the different impacts. Probably the biggest is, again, you are looking for additional funds from that is competing with operations and services. But on the other hand, it may make it more attractive to the voters. And the third option increases the reserve contribution by $500,000. And so the city contribution increases to 2.875 million. And the GO bond would reduce to slightly under $2.5 million. So originally, the discussion, you know, we were looking at, okay, if you increase the reserves, it would probably, you know, it could take more time, could take an additional year to move that over. So if you remember from the budget in fiscal year 21, this year, we're setting aside $1 million from this internal contribution into a reserve for the project. FY22, we would set aside another $1 million. And there's, if you wanted to increase that, you could do it by either having a third year or you could increase your second year contribution and just get it done. Originally, you know, the the thought was that it could impact your start date, assuming the GO bond is approved and you get all of your financing put together. And it could delay your start date, which could increase the project cost, because you have an escalator built into the numbers. But I think, you know, when talking just a little bit to Janet, I think you could, I, under any scenario, you could go forward with the schedule, assuming the GO bond is approved. You could go forward with the schedule right after that. So you would collect, get your financing in hand and then contract with FFA to complete the whatever remaining documents that are required. So so again, what, and this is a work session, so I'm not asking the council to make a decision. But at the same time, because of, you know, even though there's six or seven months before an election, if you're looking to do that, there's really not any time to waste on this either. But if we could get a a some idea of the direction of where the council would go, then the city attorney could work with you to put together the language for a ballot measure and and so on. So with that, I think it's, we've talked about it enough that I don't need to kind of parse through everything in great detail other than what we're looking for is is what do you want the internal reserve contribution to be? And that will by default dictate what the GO bond would be. And that being said, I will go ahead and say, if I were making a recommendation, and I normally don't do this, but.
What the heck? He's on his way out.
I'm on my way out. The base option is unless you wanted to increase it. Now, I heard the council talking about the impact that has on your departments. And certainly, the base amount where you have almost a third, a third, a third concept. But the the GO bond amount would be less than $3 million. You can certainly demonstrate to the public that you are really going, being good fiscal stewards by contributing more than $6 million to the project or just about $6 million. I I think there's a lot to be said for that option. Now, you know, depending on how much certainty you want, you know, an argument could be made to make more internal contributions to the project. I just think after a while, you know, it's whether it's another 250 or not, it it does start to hurt a little bit with your departments and the funds as you work towards your service delivery. But out of the three options, I I do like the base option. But, you know, again, they, I think any of them would work.
Well, I think another thing to note, obviously, saving up another 250,000 only to increase the cost by 250,000 or more makes that a little less viable. And because our building official is here, that was one quick question I had in the assumptions. I think I'm, you know, as I'm looking at any kind of major projects in the school district, especially in the western part of our state, thinking about the rebuilding efforts after wildfires, the demand for building supplies and materials a year. And I mean, it's going to be a couple of years. It's not going to happen right away, but a couple of years from now, I just see those costs actually increasing by more. Is that, is that a?
Building material cost right now is high.
Yeah.
And it's not going down anyway, so.
Right.
Yeah, so.
They've already anticipated these fires and the shortage of materials. Price of materials is going up.
Yeah.
Yeah, so and the escalator that was built into the FFA proposal when they submitted it, it was 5%. And I think historically, under stress, you could see that number being between 5 and 7 or 8% as your escalator. I will also say that I think if the council moves expeditiously towards this, you have a favorable outcome during the election. And depending on what you want to do with the second item, as far as contracting with FFA to move forward, you could certainly by next fall, winter, you could have a contractor, you know, lined up. It it just depends on how quickly everything moves. And I think I saw Byron had his hand up.
Yep, I'm I'm gonna look for questions or comments. I I want to hear from everyone. I know, especially last meeting, we all got, you know, we got a lot of good input from folks on this. So I want to make sure, too, I'm hearing from everyone that hasn't had a chance to weigh in on the project overall. Yes, Counselor Sharper.
This is a question for Janet. As you go through your journals, and I know you have a lot of journals that you read on municipal finance, in particular borrowing money. Have you seen any recent research on the public's appetite for funding non-public safety bonds for projects like this, given the pandemic that's going on?
So I do have, I have been looking at the local, the Oregon Bond Bank and the Oregon issuances. I haven't looked nationwide, but in Oregon, bonds are actually doing fairly well. And I want to say at the last, the last election, when there were several items on the ballot, there were some non-public safety type buildings passed, but there were also some that failed. And as this council has reflected on in recent meetings, a lot of it has to do with community outreach and and how well, how well the community understands the situation that's driving it. It's, you know, this is not just the need for a nice new fancy building to replace our working building. You know, so that's, that's one of the things that I think sometimes the public messaging is is the be all and all of it. And that is what I've heard from my my compadres who have talked about whether their bonds have passed or failed.
Okay, thank you. And I just have one more question. This, the reserves, the department reserves that have been set aside for this. this kind of project. Will we need to replace those? Will they need to be built up again?
They're being established for this purpose. So they are not being, we're not hitting, if you will, reserves that were established for another purpose.
Okay, so there are no other projects coming up that we would need. I'm just thinking of emergency issues. Of course, I always do. Something coming up that.
We would still try, we would still maintain our fiscal policy of 25% reserves even with these reserve contributions. So we would have that rainy day, if you will, always.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Laurel. Great questions. Yeah, this idea that of saving, creating our own savings account plus then leveraging that with these other funds is something we haven't, haven't done in the past. So it's new to us to figure out how that works. So I appreciate that that question. So other questions, Byron? Did you have something for Chris, somebody? Byron?
I was just gonna echo what you had said. You read my mind about waiting to accrue another 500,000 dollars in those reserves was going to cost us 280,000 dollars. So I think you're just paddling against the current at that point.
Absolutely.
Yeah, again, especially with the rebuilding climate that will be going on here. And things are not slowing down otherwise, right? As our, our housing demand goes. So Roxanne?
Well, and there's no question that the building has already been deemed pretty much, let's see, not earthquake safe. The retrofitting cost would be almost exactly what rebuilding would cost. And it's also not ADA compliant. So if we're going to talk about diversity, equity and inclusion in our own city hall, someone in a mobility device cannot go into that building and meet with people. It just seems to me that it's, you know, that we need to do this now. And the can has been kicked down the road for 25 years. We can't keep doing it. And if we keep doing it, it's, it's not going to get cheaper. And the building is not going to get better. And ADA issues are not going to go away. So it just seems like we can't keep pushing this off.
Yeah, that is what is hard about making these decisions. As former Mayor Ober said, the stormwater utility, this project, they it, it sounds like a lot that we've really piled on and we're considering really asking voters to and residents and our landlords to contribute even more all at once. But this isn't all at once. These are 20, 25 years worth of conversations and missed opportunities, in my opinion. And Chris?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Lots of great points here. And thank you, Roxanne, for the, you know, focus on equity there. Thank you. Thank you, Byron and Laurel for the conversation regarding, regarding financing. And, you know, it's, it's one of those rare opportunities that good, good, you know, equitable policy lines up with good fiscal policy. Right? Usually one costs money and you're trying to save money. But in addition to, in addition to, you know, waiting, not making sense, there's, there's another factor that, you know, we don't know how long we'll be blessed with these interest rates. We have really favorable rates right now. I know that, you know, a lot of people I know are refinancing their homes for the same reasons. And if, if, if we're going to do this, it makes sense to embrace the concept of that three-legged stool, right? That has come up in, in previous discussions of combination of funding sources. But also to do it while, while money is cheap and money is cheap right now. And I don't see that we have anything to gain by waiting. And, you know, personally, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of the, the base option.
Darren is again, the veteran on this topic. And also extremely experienced with public contracting and big project management. Do you have some thoughts for us?
Well, a couple, I guess personally, I think we definitely should just move forward. I think the sooner we can, you know, make the decision, which I'm at least saying, let's stay with the base option. And the sooner we can get out to start to sell the project and talk about the three-legged stool. You know, if we can get a political action committee together before year end, people can contribute this year as well as next year and at least the first 50 bucks per person or a hundred dollars per couple. In most cases, it's tax, you know, it's a tax credit on the state side. I mean, so you can leverage a little bit of that to get a few dollars to start doing brochures and those kinds of things. So my opinion is, you know, we should make this decision. We've kicked it down the road a long time. We gotta go out. Hopefully we can sell this to people and we need some time to do that. So take advantage of as much of it as we can. It's my two cents worth.
And Laurel, I think, you know, another important point that you, you make frequently is that the longer we stay in that building with its deficiencies in stability, the worse off we are and starting to make plans right away to how we're going to move staff out, deal with that. I mean, I'd love to hear your comments about that because I know you have really thoughtful insight into that.
There was a big earthquake in Alaska yesterday. And a couple of days before that, we passed the anniversary of the 1989 Loma Prieta earthquake to the south of us. And every time we have one of these events, the first thing I think about is those people at City Hall and how, how easily that building can collapse. And I I, I, my heart would break if anybody even had a scratch from that, from that building breaking if we hadn't done everything we possibly can to move them out and to a safer place. At the same time, Larry is correct. I'm finishing the inside of my garage and workshop and I buy materials once a month when my social security check arrives. And they almost double each month the cost of the the, the materials that I need there. So I'm wondering too, what we're going to do if the bond doesn't pass. Do we have a plan B?
Yeah, excellent thought. Thank you. Good. We can keep Chad on as a consultant to come up with that. No. Counselor Carrie, do you have anything? Thoughts?
Not much different than what's been said. To even consider not moving forward on this, to me is incomprehensible for all the reasons we've been talking about. The fact that we can demonstrate, and I'm with the base option, that we can demonstrate that the Urban Renewal Agency is contributing towards this, and this will have an impact in the downtown area. The city government and the associated enterprise funds that will benefit from this are contributing. And then we're asking the voters to participate as well. And, and whether it's a three-legged stool, it's probably as good analogy as anything. Option one, you know, minimizes the, the city reserves, but I, I don't know that that, and it would push the, the bond a little higher. I don't know that that's a meaningful deal. I'm not, I think it's going to pass it or not pass either, either at 300 or 3.3 million or 2.97 million. And, but I think we've got, we've gone a long way with this balanced approach. The, the collection of reserves maximize urban renewal. We're under 3 million on the bond. We don't need to apologize for making this ask. I mean, we don't need to apologize for that. And I'd be happy to lead the tours through, through the building. And then, and then here are the, here are the arguments on why we don't need that. I understand there's, there's some expense going to be related. I think it will become a little more apparent once we begin to get an idea of, you know, cost per thousand. Get a little further down the road on that. But, you know, it's the price of poker. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, it just, it, it's what we've got to do to bring our city into a modern era. And if other cities can do it, I don't know why we can't do it. So I think we need to move forward. I'm a base option guy. And let's go.
Thanks, John. I, yeah, I agree with you. I think about that when I say the fact that with this prudent planning, and it's all public money. I'm not saying it's not the people's money because every bit of it is. But to say that you could get a, a new building that anchors the downtown that will enhance our city, our civic pride, our attractiveness to other investors that, that meets the level of investment we've gotten or we are getting from the private sector. And you're getting that for, you know, 25, 30 years at, of 3 million dollars? That just is unheard of. And I, I agree. I would not, I would not be embarrassed to go ask folks for that. And that's even, you guys weren't even on the call today prepping for the economic development meeting because we had Chad in his office and Suzanne in her office. And there's a bathroom between them. So we all had to stop talking when someone was using the restroom because it's so loud in their offices. I gotta tell you. It's a little embarrassing if you're trying to invite folks in to our community to improve our economic development, to, to create jobs to do that. And if those, if that had been someone new to the community on that call instead of me and Roxanne, it would have, it was, it was unfortunate. That's what they deal with every day. So I'm hearing a lot of consensus for kind of looking towards that base option. Does anyone want to make a compelling argument for anything different? I am seeing no one wanting to, after all your work. Thank you very much. But yeah, that base option is extremely reasonable. So okay.
So with that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't find my mic button. I think, I think when you're asking the public for money to approve a bond, saying that it's 3 million dollars, sounds like a lot of money. And I think it might help to break it down and say, for the average Mr. And Mrs. Monmouth, who has a three-bedroom, two-bath house, this is what it's gonna, these are going to be the additional costs for you on your property taxes.
Yeah, you're legally required.
3 million dollars. I don't have 3 million dollars. Sorry, folks. I'm gonna have to vote no on this.
Yeah, you're legally required in the ballot measure to actually calculate the amount per the tax rate. So.
Yeah, but how many people read that? They don't, generally don't read the fine print. But if we have informational information going out to the public to try to convince them to approve this, it'd be helpful to just say, this is what it's going to cost you in dollars. If you, if your property taxes are this much, it'll cost you this much for this additional general obligation bond.
Can I just? So, so yes, when you go through your community outreach and engagement piece, that obviously will be a big part of this. You will, you know, have all of those figures available. And in fact, Janet has been already working with the county assessor's office to identify what the city's medium home value is so that you know what your assessed value and based upon some different scenarios. I would, I would, unless there's, you're interested in knowing that because she's ready. But otherwise, we would just bring that back, that information at the next meeting. And I was going to ask Lane, so putting together the resolution for a ballot measure. You know, can, can you just speak to that briefly for the council?
Well, yeah, we would work with bond council to draft the resolution. It has to be very particular in terms of the the elements of the resolution. So we would work with bond council on that. What I have done in the past is draft ballot title, usually in cooperation with the bond council. There's a period where we publish the proposed ballot title, giving an opportunity for anyone who objects to challenge the ballot title. It's a pretty straightforward process. We've been down it a few times.
So do you think that the council would be, would you be prepared to bring a draft? A draft to the council in November?
Probably not at the next meeting. Again, I think we'd want to have a conversation with bond council before we prepare a draft resolution.
Okay, thank you.
They'll do that as part of their preparatory work for the, for the issue. So Janet, you and I can talk about that, getting them engaged, filling them in on what we're doing and starting to work on, on a resolution.
I've, I've given them a bit of a heads up already.
I want to make sure the bond council is involved in drafting that because again, it's a very particular requirements that can affect the taxability or non-taxability of the, of the bonds and otherwise compliance with all of the requirements of Oregon borrowing, public borrowing laws, which are very particular and highly specialized.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
So we have, we have direction.
So, design development phase?
Yeah. So that being said, of course, now you start looking to work towards May. And if it's, if the, the bond, if the measure is successful, you do want to try to expedite it as quickly as possible, as we talked about. The longer it takes, the more it's going to cost. I think FFA did build in a an accelerator cost into it if the project is delayed past May of 2022, if I remember right. So I did talk to FFA to identify what would be a natural, without getting too far out. You know, without having the bond approved, does it make sense for the council to to contract with FFA for construction documents to, for permitting? And, and I don't think so. But what I do think would make sense is to have FFA work with the city on this design development phase. And I included, so in the staff report, I also included a FFA proposal that includes all scopes that go into, you know, the final design, the development design phase through construction administration, which would be, you know, where they're on site providing inspection services and things like that. So in talking to them, I think what would make sense is for the city to engage FFA for this development, design development phase. It will take 10 weeks. And if we engage them right away, you could have that information finished by the, I think at this point, you're probably looking at the first part of January. They would be able to take their schematic design work and go in and complete all that. But they would also be able to complete the, the documents and the cost estimate. So while they did give you the cost estimate as part of the schematic design phase, this will just take it that much further. So you will have an opportunity to take a look in real time at what the cost estimate is going into a May election, for example. And, and the kind of even more advantageous than And and the kind of even more advantageous than that is if the bond is successful, you would be able to pivot directly over into the construction documents. That's going to take 14 weeks. And then there's the bidding and permitting phase. And so if you're able, you would be able to, I think, have a contractor onboard by sometime, you know, next, late next fall would be my guess. You go through the the number of weeks, but I think it's, it would be a fall schedule for that. I just think, you know, having gone through this before, the one thing that I, after the fact that I said, I wish I had done different. And there were a few things because it's, you know, on a big project like this, it gets a little complicated, especially with the community engagement piece. But before, we really kind of went into it with both feet. We just, we really went into it as far as contracting with the, while we didn't go to the construction documents, I had work done that I probably wouldn't have had done, knowing that the bond was not approved. So there was some due diligence work that I would have delayed until after the bond. In this case, I think if you complete your develop, your design development phase and stop there and then wait for the bond, you wouldn't be as ready to go if you say, let's just complete the construction documents. Right, but it's a natural stop point to say, okay, now let's wait and see how the bond does. And if it's approved, FFA can pick up and and go through and complete the construction documents and things like that. So we currently have sufficient reserves on hand in the city to contract with FFA for the $171,500 to complete this piece. And the only additional work that I plan to contract, not with FFA, but with the third party, is the hazard assessment of the site. So we're currently looking at that. It's going to be anywhere between $5,000 and $15,000 to complete the hazardous assessment. But that's just part of the the cost of, yeah, of doing the bid of the project. So, well, I'm not sure if Lane, if the council, if there was consensus to move forward with the design development, if I'd be able to do that or do they need to vote on that phase to move forward?
I would, I would think a vote would be in order.
So I think if the council wanted to pick this up at another meeting, you could do that.
There's nothing that says you can't take action in a work session. It's still a publicly called meeting.
No, we can do it.
I don't know, but I'm.
Yeah.
I'm a traditionalist.
But you have to be, you can do it. There's nothing in the public meetings that you can't take action at this work session. It's it's a called meeting, it's on the agenda. You could do it if you wanted to, or you can wait.
I mean, if if the council is comfortable with it and the city attorney is comfortable with it, then I would encourage you to do it because again, time is of the essence for the project looking towards next May.
And if we are, as we start to talk about the, you know, the PAC and the opportunity to gather other folks to help with that kind of message to the community, having that design development work being done helps that as well. So in my experience, so.
And and it also will allow, so the the vetting through the schematic design to get to this piece, there's, there's of course, some issues that still need to be resolved with the final design. And that would allow, you know, sufficient time for those issues to be worked through.
Yeah. So if we're comfortable with a motion to accept the bid from FFA for the design development phase, I would entertain a motion and we can decide whether or not we want to bring that forward tonight. Darren?
I would like to make that motion. I move that we move forward with the design development phase as proposed in the proposal from FFA.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second from Counselor Schinkel. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Will there be any discussion?
Aye.
Sure. Sorry, John, did you have some discussion?
Well, you know, I've got a number of questions about this. You know, all in this deal with FFA, and I know we're pulling off 171,000 of it, but it's a half a million dollars, more than that. And I want to remind council that this is the group that originally said it was going to cost seven and a half million. And now it's at nine million. Is this a not to exceed figure, so 171? Is that, is that the understanding?
That is correct.
And and given the the size of the, and I understand we're doing this in segments here, but do we have any, do we have any obligation to, you know, put an RFP out for other people that might be, and not parts of this? I mean, there's certain parts that only FFA can do. But I'm wondering if there are not parts of that that we could engage others in. I I don't know. I don't, I'm not necessarily in favor of it, but I I just would like to know what our options are. So half a million bucks.
I I don't believe that you have any obligation to send out an RFP, but I'll defer to Lane, of course.
Yeah, you've already engaged FFA on this project. By the same token, neither do you have any obligation to continue with FFA beyond the this level of services. If you don't want to continue with them, then you can you can shift to a different architect at that point to complete the work. You're only engaging them for this design development phase, and that's the extent of your of your obligation at this point, if you were to approve that.
Okay, Chris?
I I would like to call attention to to the fact that FFA was abundantly clear with us in the early design phase that that seven and a half million was not an accurate number. And once the preliminary design was complete, that the accurate number would be higher than that. So yes, they did say that number, that number was a placeholder number. They said it in many meetings that that, you know, that number was not the number. It was not an accurate number. So I I don't feel comfortable holding any grudge against them for that number. I don't, also don't have, you know, any particular love for them for any other reason than that we've already engaged with them. They know the project and time is of the essence. So that's, you know, that's, that's kind of my stance on FFA and, you know, I I'm comfortable moving forward.
Okay, Laurel? I just, a quick question. I probably didn't hear correctly, but I thought Lane said we needed to take a vote for this kind of thing during the regular council meeting during the business agenda.
No, what I said was you can, you can vote on this during the work session. You are in a, you're in a properly called public meeting, and so you can take action. It's your tradition generally not to, but that's not a legal requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Byron?
We call the vote.
Call for the question, Darren. Did you have another comment before I close?
I, it's a little bit off this in the sense that I've got questions related to cost. So I think that's really important. And the further we get down the path of knowing where we stand, the more those numbers start to firm up. And so I think it's really important to do this part. That would even be an argument to do the next one, which would be the actual documents, because you'd get firmer numbers coming out of that as well. I'm more concerned about that part of it in that we ask for the right amount on the bonding because that's the the fill-in. I I would like to see us move forward with this part. And then I do have a couple of questions related to the costing to make sure things are included.
Thanks, Darren. That's great. Your experience again will be super helpful there as we get there, so. Byron called for the question, but Roxanne?
Oh, I I just wanted to remind everybody of the issue we had with, I think it was a sidewalk in front of City Hall where somebody didn't count something right and it ended up costing us quite a bit more money. So it's good to look at these increments every step of the way to make sure the costing is done properly. So I'm glad you said that, Darren. It reminded me of that.
All right. And I don't, we don't need a roll call on this. So all in favor of completing this contract with FFA for this phase, please signify by saying aye.
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 And opposed?
No.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Sharma.
And again, just for the record, that would be a not to exceed amount based on the proposal.
Okay. So the motion and they're, they're all indicating that they are fine with that motion. And second, to make clear that it is a not to exceed and the vote remains five to one and that's it for that. So one more quick report from Ms. Shinnart.
Super quick report. I did send you all a staff report in your email this evening. Just after packets went out last week, we looked at term sheets for the URA-backed loan that the city is taking on full faith and credit. And next week, we will be closing on our 4 million 15-year term loan as Counselor Lopez pointed out at very exciting interest rates. 2.19% was our, was the interest rate that was quoted. It'll be 2.36% all in with fees. It was negotiated as a level payment plan and it has no prepayment penalty after five years. I was, I was very pleased with the outcome of that as were our financial advisor and our and our bond council. So I would take any questions you have about the bank loan, but we'll be signing documents next week. Thanks for your approval to do that and and we will be moving forward with URA projects.
Just a quick question, Jen.
Yes.
What are your thoughts on why only three banks responded when you sent out 37 requests?
Well, what we heard from the financial advisor was that people were a little reluctant to do the 15-year term. We did hear from Columbia Bank, who is our in-town bank, and Key Bank, who are, have been very interested in doing business with us. I think that it really probably was that that folks are a little bit uneasy with with something that is a 15-year term. But again, for 15 years on a taxable issue, 2.19 is very good. And I've been doing some modeling for the GO bond that suggests that, as Counselor Lopez was saying, interest rates would be lower than that for a tax-exempt issue. So now is a really good time to be borrowing money.
Okay, thank you. And we're, regardless of the bank that we use, we're obligated to pay interest for five years.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Which again, not always a term you can get in these kinds of things. That is, that is amazing so that that we were able to get that on the loan. So I, again, and for this kind of issue, you don't really have to have the in-depth advising and stuff that you might for the general obligation bond. But the fact that we did do that, Janet had those advisors reviewing this means I, it's obviously a very sound offering and very exciting. All right, any other last comments or questions? Then a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I'm going to, I'm going to move that we adjourn. Thank you, Laurel, Counselor Sharma.
I can never get to, I can never get to my microphone fast enough.
She always usually has a cat on her lap that probably is just lying across.
That's an octopus. It's not really a cat.
Not Zoe tonight. All in favor of adjourn, please signify by saying aye.
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 All right, and we shall let you go prior to nine o'clock.
Yeah.
And say goodbye to Chad's smiling mask.
Thank you again, Chad.
Thank you, Chad.
Thank you, everyone.